Okay. Good morning. I now call to order the annual TriMet budget hearing. Oregon law requires the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission to provide TriMet with this public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to promote public discussion of TriMet’s budget. The Commission wants this discussion to promote thoughtful consideration of this and future budget issues. TriMet will make the first presentation this morning, then I’ll ask our staff to summarize the budget. Then we’ll ask questions and discuss the budget with you. Following discussions, our discussions, we will take testimony from the public. And I think we have a sign-up sheet?
Sign-up sheet outside the door.
Okay, outside the door as you come in if you want to speak. And we’ll check that towards the end of the meeting. With that, I’ll let the Commission introduce ourselves. And again, my name is David Behringer, and I’m the Chair, and I have no conflicts of interest.
Good morning. I’m Margot Norton, retired. My career was as a government finance officer, most lately as the CFO at Metro. This is my third year on the Commission, but my first opportunity to be present at the TriMet hearing, so I’m looking forward to it this morning.
My name is Mark Wabold. I’m a policy analyst in the President’s Office at Portland State University, and this is my second year with the Commission and my second year with TriMet.
Morning. I’m James Offsink, TSCC Commissioner and Vice Chair. When I’m not commissioning, I work at OHSU, and this is my third year with TSCC and my third year hearing TriMet’s budget. Thank you.
With that, I’ll let the TriMet people introduce themselves.
I wanted to ask the TriMet folks, first off, I’m Bruce Warner. I’m the Chair or the President, I guess, official title of the TriMet Board of Directors. I have a few remarks for you, but I think the Board should introduce themselves. Craig, would you like to start?
I’m Craig Prosser. I represent District 7, which is primarily Clackamas County. Been on the Board now seven years. So, I retired, I was a government finance officer, in fact, used to work at Metro before Marco did, so been around for a while.
Good morning. I’m Lori Baumann, TriMet District 4, which is primarily southeast Portland, and I very recently retired after a long career in private practice as a lawyer at the Aeterwind Firm.
Good morning. Travis Solvall, I represent District 6, which is most of East County, including parts of Portland, and then all of the four cities of Gresham, Troutdale, Fairview, and Wood Village.
Good. And I’m from District 1, and that’s the western Washington County, from Beaverton, parts of Beaverton, and all west, and also a bit south. And I’ve been on the Board now for about six and a half years, right?
Yes.
Same, so we went through the same confirmation process. Remember it will, right? And my background is transportation engineer, but know many of you, I think, from various other positions.
I’m Linda Simmons, and I represent District 3, which is a part of Beaverton, southwest Portland, Tigard, Twalatin, anything else?
That’s good.
It’s a combination of things. I’ve been on the Board just about a year and a half, and I’m a retired community college administrator.
Good. Want to have a staff here? Oh, there we go.
Bernie Bottomley, Executive Director of Public Affairs for TriMet.
Stephen Witter, Executive Director of Capital Projects.
Dee Brookshire, Executive Director of Finance and Administration.
Good morning. Doug Kelsey, General Manager at TriMet.
Good morning. John Gardner, Director of Diversity and Transit Equity for TriMet.
Good morning. Ryan Schaub, Director of Revenue Operations and Electronic Affairs at TriMet.
Great, thank you.
All right. So, very quickly, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, thank you for coming and look forward to your, this dialogue with you about our budget, because we feel good about the budget and we want to answer your questions. So, before you, you have our proposed 2019 budget, and last year, what I think I wanted to let you folks know is, I think we’ve fulfilled the goal of expanding service and still working to renew the aging pieces of our infrastructure. That was, as you remember, one of our priorities. And we’ve got some work yet to do for the remainder of this fiscal year, but we’ve made great progress. A few quick accomplishments, I think, are worthy of note, is we have expanded bus service by 3.4%, which means about 1,400 hours per week of additional service, so it is significant. We’ve added three new lines. First line is Line 74, which provides a new north-south route on 162nd Avenue in the southeast Portland area. We have Line 42, which offers an alternative to traffic congestion on Highway 217 between Beaverton and Tigard. And Line 82, which is part of a package of improvements in Gresham and East County. So, we’re real pleased, and the public likes those additions a lot. And we also have been continuing our work to modernize our bus fleet. We’ve added 57 new buses as a result of the budget. We launched the state-of-the-art electronic fare system, which is known as HOP FastPass. And last week, we continued to expand the program, becoming, and this, we’ll ask the staff if you want to understand what this exactly means, become the first transit agency in the world to offer an account-based regional virtual transit card on Google Play, on Google Pay. And you can probably explain exactly what that meant, right?
Of course.
And we continue TriMet’s efforts to rejuvenate the MAX system, and before the end of this fiscal year, we hope to have nearly complete or complete a major improvement project near Providence Park. And with the budget that the Board brings before you today, we will continue with smart investments in service expansion, improvements to transit access and equity, safety enhancements, increased focus on increasing, or excuse me, enforcing the TriMet code. And as we began the discussions around the budget you see before you, we directed the General Manager to build a spending plan around four key themes. First was enhancing customer and employee safety, continues to be a priority for us, incorporating and taking advantage of House Bill 2017, which was the funding package approved by the legislature last year. And we’re really looking at the programs for the low-income fare, which we took the final action on a few weeks ago, and continuing expansion of bus service. We want to improve schedule reliability, and our General Manager can answer questions about that, because we’ve done a great job there. And then we need to deal still with employment, the growth of, because we’re going to be hiring employees, the growth in not only employees, but the number of citizens here in the region, and in our benefits management, which you know is an issue we’ve tackled as a Board. The budget remains consistent with the Board’s fund balance policy and our pension funding policy, which if you’re unaware of those, we can answer questions about that. And it also fits in with our strategic framework of a business plan that’s going to be fully realized here at TriMet. So unless you have questions of me or the Board at this time, I’d like to turn it over to our General Manager, Doug Kelsey, to walk you through some of the details of the budget.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, President Warner. Good morning, everybody. For Chair, Commissioners, President Warner mentioned some of our accomplishments and what’s been laid out for us here in our FY19 budget. We’ve accomplished a lot this last fiscal year, and we continue to build on that with investments to keep our buses and our trains running safely and on time. Yes, you can do both. We provide a critical service for the region, and with this budget, we believe we’re answering the call for more service with an ambitious expansion plan. But we’re trying to do it thoughtfully, and through the lens and guidance of a comprehensive business plan that President Warner actually referenced. So, it’s our first really full, second year of a full five-year business plan. The business plan provides us multi-year map for the future, a measure for progress, and helps us prioritize and align strategies for growth with value but limited resources. And now I want to walk you through some of the highlights of the $710 million operating budget. First, under the theme of safety, we do need to increase our presence of safety on the system. One example of this is, we are in the process of establishing a contract with Portland Patrol Incorporated that will add as many as 30 transit piece officers initially, provide an additional security presence while enforcing the TriMet code, including fare requirements. We’ll continue with replacement of analog closed-circuit television equipment on older buses and our MAX trains. We’ll also do the complete, the federally mandated positive train control upgrades on the West commuter rail system to help enhance safety. Our pedestrian crossing improvements along the MAX line in Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Gresham will also continue. We refer to that as Renew the Blue. We’re also evaluating our current process to improve how our customers contact us for related safety. Currently, if they’re unable to reach someone in person, they call 911 and have to go through that process. We want to expedite this. This new approach would allow for more direct reporting and response access, where someone could even potentially hit a silent yellow strip into the cab and get somebody to assist at the next station or two. We’re also evaluating the use of these silent alarms, so it will take some years, but we think it’s a positive step for enhancing the customer confidence. Under our House Bill 2017, we will launch a low-income fare program July 1st, not very far away. Provides a framework for individuals who earn up to 200% of the federal poverty level to qualify for an honored citizen fare. We’re also making the largest annual increase in bus service since 2014. Among the highlights, it’ll include two new lines, the return of 24-hour bus service, route changes and extensions to improve reliability, increase service hours, as well as frequency. The continued fleet renewal through the purchase of 64 new buses, and I will comment that, in fact, our average age of the fleet, it used to be 19 years, it’s now down to somewhere over eight.
Ah, yeah.
The launch of an electric bus pilot program with the purchase of five electric buses, the first arriving just next month, which will be road-tested on our Line 62 in Washington County. Will also include the purchase of 77 new lift vehicles. As we look to improve their overall system reliability that President Warner referenced, next year will be, there’ll be design and environmental analysis that’ll continue as part of our plan to extend the MAX red line service into Hillsborough, specifically our plan to extend it to the Fairplex Station from the Beaverton Transit Center. For light rail maintenance of way and light rail vehicle maintenance, one key measure that we’ve introduced into the organization is mean distance between failure, we refer to MDBF. Over the past year, this has increased by over 100% in its performance. We expect more improvements in the future. This is contributing to our stronger on-time performance results, which directly benefits our customer and, of course, our staff. The renovation of the Blue Line stations will continue. The launch of an elevator rehabilitation project is underway, with many of our elevators being replaced. Under the employment, growth, and benefit management side, there will be a 3.24% increase for all union employees, in addition to union step increases in a recently agreed-to collective agreement. The non-union merit budget of 3.5% as well as a 1% tool target to address some pay equity to the Pay Equity Act to bring us to where we should be. We plan to increase staffing by 153 union positions and 40 non-union positions. And we also continue, with continued reform of our active employee and retiree benefit costs. With rapid growth comes a need for more space. The budget funds a variety of operating facilities, repairs, including final closeout of a full facility for lift operations. Phase one of the Powell Maintenance Facility, that’s our bus facility, and exploration now of a fourth bus facility, which we’ll talk about later. As we look to future growth, the budget includes funding for preliminary design and federal environmental impact work for our very important southwest corridor project. It also funds design and construction of the Division Transit Project, which, assuming federal funds are forthcoming, is anticipated to open in the fall of 2021. We continue the development and rollout of our innovative and industry-leading HOP FastPass electronic fare system. For the seventh year in a row, we will not have a fare increase for our riders. TriMet is committed to staying on course, to achieving the long-term fiscal stability, to keep our commitments to riders, our employees, retirees, and payroll taxpayers, and to meet the transit needs of this important, growing region. Thank you for your time this morning, and I’d maybe now like to open up for any questions that the Committee may have.
Great, thank you. I guess I’ll start our questions, then. So, my first one is, congratulations, Mr. Kelsey, on your appointment as the new Director, Manager. Could you please give us your personal vision of what TriMet will be like after you’ve been here for about five years?
Thank you. I think in five years, I see a stronger, more diverse, and customer-responsive agency that has moved barriers for transit use, and an agency that is a leader and partner in the mobility of our region. I, along with a dedicated team at TriMet, have a vision and a plan for the agency that advances our customer experience and personal safety, fosters stronger employee relations, and grows sustainable transit using alternative fuels to meet the demands of our rapidly growing district. We are actively pursuing a customer-centric approach to eventually yield a seamless rider experience. Internally, we’re building a more diverse and supportive work environment to become a top employer of choice. To ensure we continue to advance the agency, we’ve detailed our long-term goals, as well as annual benchmarks, in our five-year business plan. We’re working to articulate our objectives and define goals, as well as establish plans that balance service expansion and critically important state-of-good repair. We’re planning to expand our bus fleet from more than 600 to well over 900 over the next six years, and we are hiring and investing at a rapid and sustained rate to meet expansion and maintenance needs. We’re laying the foundation to now be a national leader in integrated personal mobility services, specifically in first-and-last mile, total trip planning, and alternative service delivery methods. We plan to create and earn the right to serve our valued customers and communities every day, so they become not just customers, but raving fans.
Great. We’ll come back in five years and see how you do.
Thank you. I am a TriMet customer. I have a HOP pass. I purchased it at my retail outlet. Believe you me, I understand the business efficiency related to the pass. I do have the pass. I don’t use my phone. My phone is a dumb phone, not a smartphone. But I manage my account from my home computer. I load and reload my card with a banking relationship, so it works for me. When you first rolled it out, it didn’t go quite as well as you had anticipated. You had some pushback from, particularly from low-income advocates who were concerned about bank accounts, about those types of issues. So, we’re ready to kind of move HOP along again. So, tell me about HOP along and how this is going to work better.
Ryan Schaub, Director of Revenue, will, service will help us with that.
Sure, absolutely. So, it was always part of our HOP transition plan to remove paper passes from the retail stores, and that’s the anxiety that the public had expressed as part of the rollout. In the old world, just to remind everyone, we had about 130 retail stores selling paper passes, and today, we have over 360 retail stores that are currently vending HOP cards, and that will continue to grow. Our target is 500. So, in terms of accessibility, we have certainly increased our number of locations. The past anxiety expressed regarding the transition was not so much from riders, we found out, but more from smaller organizations that had been using Fred Meyer’s and Safeway, large retailers, as a means of purchasing passes and books of tickets for their community. And that was not something we were actually aware of. We were, you know, we had relationships with Fred Meyer’s, and we would send them passes, but we didn’t know who was buying those passes. So, once we became aware of that, we developed a plan to reach out to those community groups and bring them into what we call our institutional program, which is where we can set them up with an institutional account and get them passes through that means, which is much better suited. The customer side, we have also ramped up education and marketing outreach efforts to get the word out about HOP, and that will continue through summer. Later this spring, we plan to announce a date in early fall when we will begin pulling paper from retail stores again.
So, as a follow-up, so you learned that your retail outlets, you mentioned specifically Fred Meyer, were working with institutions, so that was new news to you. What else did you learn from the first rollout that you can apply more generally to changes in future TriMet programs?
Customer, changing customer behavior is difficult, and I think we need to continue to apply frequent and consistent messaging to ensure that we’re educating groups in advance of making changes. Our plan for this summer and fall’s change is to start educating them this spring. That way, they’ve got, you know, roughly three months of warning before we make changes on them, and I think that should result in a better acceptance of the change.
If I could add too, I think that when Doug and I were out talking about his appointment, it became clear to me that we definitely need to up our game in terms of outreach, especially to some of the minority organizations, low-income organizations, and I think you had a question about what we were doing in the diversity programs, and we’ll answer that a bit more, but it was clear to me that we needed to step up our effort in a big way, and this is just part of it.
So, I just have one follow-up. So, I’m familiar with a nonprofit here in downtown that serves homeless people, and they pass out individual tickets occasionally to help people get to job interviews and things like that. How is the new process going to work in that case?
So, if they are an institutional customer, they can order through a website portal, similar HOP instruments that are limited use, so it’s good for a day or two-and-a-half hour ticket, and instead of being a paper pass that you would validate, you just tap it on the HOP reader.
Okay. Will the paper passes be valid for some time?
Yes.
They have inventories of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Which David does.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Let’s see, I think I have the next question. So, TriMet measures progress in improving on-time performance and ridership. Is performance in these areas meeting your goals, and then what are the techniques, costs, and strategies for improving performance in these areas?
Thanks. I’ll try and take this one. Since January of 2015 for our rail network and 2017 for our buses, our on-time performance metrics have demonstrated an upward trend in performance. There’s many, many initiatives that we have underway to improve both bus and rail on-time performance, and we have a continuous improvement approach to this. It is very structured. It is a cyclical process that really kicks off each year over what, a nine-month horizon. The program, it’s comprised of interdepartmental groups overseen by the Chief Operating Officer and a steering committee that is coordinated by a very specific business process analyst. The fundamental strategy here is to develop and execute improvement projects while providing regular oversight, skills training, coaching, and management, and where details really matter. It includes, we’ve introduced processes of lean, Six Sigma, and Kaizen techniques into the process, and that will continue to expand throughout the organization over time. The goal is to make incremental improvements, which, when you combine them together, results in significant leverage or increases in both bus and rail reliability, as well as safety. After all, we believe they’re very much interdependent. During the improvement cycle, projects were identified, they’re vetted, they’re approved for the amount of effort applied times the resources needed, times the percentage chance of success. The works executed, the projects then get closed out. Most projects are completed during the improvement cycle, however, there’s some that may be terminated because they get consolidated with others, or they get deferred because of new information. To date, the majority of projects, though, have been completed, with a few resulting in breakthrough achievements. I’ll give you an example of where one individual in our engineering group came up with replacing clips that hold the rail together out by PDX Airport. Instead of converting into fixing the issue, we try and convert the language into a customer language. How many minutes of on-time performance does it add back into our customer’s day? So, in that case, with one change and a language change, it added 22 minutes per day into on-time performance for our customers. So, it’s that conversion of language in a customer language, difference that might be in an engineering or a planning or some other important language, too. The estimated cost for 2018 are approximately $1.3 million.
So, that, if I could follow up, we were interested in both the on-time performance, which I think you’ve done a good job detailing, and then also, it seemed like when we were reading through the organizations, or maybe it was the Board’s directives for key metrics, it also included increases in ridership? I wondered if you could talk about that? And maybe it’s directly linked in that you see on-time performance as the key way to move ridership, but since they are distinct, I hope you could flesh that out a little bit.
Yeah, so just one comment, and I’ll maybe ask Bernie Bottomley to add on to the ridership piece, but I think there’s some basics of any relationship. First, if you can’t be reliable, customers are going to look for other choices. If we go back a few years ago, the average on-time performance, for example, in MAX was 75%. Now, we’re tracking the last 31-day average is actually between 90 and 91%. It will go up and down, but we need to take care of the fundamentals first before you can grow the business. So, we think we were vulnerable here, so we’re shoring that piece up, of which to add new HOP products and other things on. But I’ll maybe ask Bernie just to comment with some additional initiatives we have underway to help drive ridership.
Thank you.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is, looking more closely at sort of where our core ridership is now versus where it was, say, 20 years ago, geographically, there’s been a lot of movement in terms of gentrification out of northeast Portland towards east Portland. So, we’re looking to build the rider, or the service network in east Portland, make it more frequent, add lines where there currently aren’t lines, and also orient that service in a way that it serves new sets of trips. So, 20, 30 years ago, the vast majority of the trips that were taken on the TriMet system were from outside the downtown core into the core and then back out in the evening. Those trip styles or origins and destinations have changed over time, and so you see a lot more north-south trips, folks in mid-county going north up to the Columbia Corridor, or south to the Clackamas County Industrial District. So, thinking much more broadly about how the system should be oriented over time is one of the things that we’re working on, and I’ll touch on that when we get to the service changes over the last couple of years. And then the other is, the General Manager talked about, one of the key factors in getting on-time performance is getting out of the depot on time. If you don’t leave the bus barn on time, it’s really hard to keep a schedule. The other half of that equation is what happens once you’re out on the route. And we are working on some new strategies that come out of the Division Transit Project to try to maintain our schedule once we’re out in traffic. And that includes things like smart signals and Q jump lanes, things like that, that allow the transit bus to travel through the traffic, leapfrogging around it or getting through intersections more quickly, and that allows us to stay on time, shortens the length of trips, and we know from our customer surveys that that’s a key element in driving ridership.
I might just add, if I can, to Bernie’s comment, that one of the other things we’re doing is, it will take some time before we see the full results. We’re spending more time in a more disciplined way with our municipal partners, who do road construction, as we know, just outside here on NATO and others. It never ends. And so, part of it is that we can work in before municipalities or other partners go to RFP to get the transit experience factored into the intersection disruptions. Because once it goes to RFP, it’s almost too late, and it’s a big change order. So, the goal is to get it, can we get Q jump lanes, even temporary, hopefully with some permanent construction configurations change as well. So, having done this in past business lives, it can bring tremendous short and long-term value, not just on the technology piece of transit signal preemption that Bernie referred to, but just on the fundamental construction where we’re just not in the same lineup with everybody else that every 50 meters helps. So, we think that could bring significant value, but it will take a bit of time.
And does it seem like, sorry, if you had, does it seem like those relationships with your other regional government partners have been going well? I mean, does it seem like they’re pretty receptive to bus lanes or signal preemptions and those types of strategies?
Yeah, I just, actually, I would give them terrific credit. They’ve been terrific partners, and I think as our system ages, we’ve sometime been the instigator of significant projects that you may have seen or hopefully not experienced yourself through, our Morrison-Yamhill upgrades, our First Avenue upgrades, very significant disruptions, and we try and work together to say, gee, while the construction patient is open, if you will, what else might you want to do? So, we, from a customer lens, we minimize the footprint of impact in a totality basis. So, I think those are good examples where we’ve all kind of worked upstream to leverage the impact and the gain that could come with it. So, I give terrific credit to all of them.
Thank you.
And you had mentioned that you’re increasing the frequency and 24-hour service. That must have an impact on ridership as well, right?
Yeah, that would be one of the contributors, for sure. Plus, the House Bill 2017 is going to be a significant contributor to increase bus service frequency and not only just serving existing demand, we have somewhere, we have pass-ups on our bus routes where we need to, you know, we’ll well look at articulated buses as well down the road. well look at articulated buses as well down the road. But also, there's the serving of the community where transit can be used as a very powerful tool to help shape communities that may not have the densities around it and with development that would follow later on. So it's serving and shaping does both tools.
I have the next question. We're wondering about cost recovery from fares. So first of all, if there's a national standard for the ratio, that would set kind of a target for what Trimet's aiming for? But then also, what are the practical measures that you're looking to employ to help improve fare recovery? And then lastly, we are always very interested in the WES, in part because in the summary that staff developed for us, it shows, you know, what the cost per ride is and what the recovery per ride is. And obviously, for the WES, it's pretty disparate. And so we're wondering if there's any plans around that specifically.
Okay. So starting with cost recovery, cost recovery is an efficiency ratio metric in the transit industry. And it's also known as fare box recovery ratio, recovery ratio, and other items. And it's a fraction of operating expenses that are met by the fares paid by customers' passengers. It's computed by dividing the system's total fare revenue by its total operating expenses. The metric is usually expressed by mode, bus, rail, commuter rail, lift, et cetera, and blended as an average, all modes combined. So Trimet's recovery ratio for operations across all modes is 33.8 as of the beginning of this fiscal year. The recovery ratio on the total system across all modes is 25.7. Now, there is no national standard for this, for the metric. But FTA has, Federal Transit Administration, has minimum cost recovery thresholds transit agencies must meet in order to qualify for continuing federal funding. And some of the grant programs typically ranges from 23 to 25%. Each agency sets its own efficiency goals on using the recovery ratio based on their own economic conditions. As far as striving to increase and decrease this ratio and the practical measures that are available, of course, we are striving to increase the ratio, as are most transits. The levers to increase the cost recovery ratios are to increase the amount of fares received and/or reduce the costs of operations. Fare revenues received can be increased by raising fares through increased collections via fare enforcement, gating or closing the system, or other methods such as raising fares. Cost reductions occur in the usual ways through an array of belt-tightening exercises that could include reducing staffing levels, changing vendors to those that offer lower costs, reducing overtime, et cetera. As far as WES is concerned, will Trimet be able to increase recovery on WES? Not under the current circumstances in the short term. Though WES ridership has fallen off primarily in the past few years due to employer changes in the south region. The number of employees using the commuter rail has declined. It was expected to increase over time, and it's done the opposite. One significant factor in Trimet's continued support of this mode in line is that WES is on a multi-decade contract with Portland and Western Railroad with no or very limited opportunity to cancel, say, going out of business or some other catastrophic event. But we're looking at that. So that's, any other questions on that?
Sure. We had some follow-up, specifically about fare avoidance and if, well, I mean, I guess if there's a metric that Trimet looks at for percentage of riders who pay directly or, I guess, yeah, I mean, about fare avoidance in general, if there are strategies that Trimet is using to both measure and affect the number.
We do. We are actually very aggressively addressing this under fare enforcement programs that perhaps I would like to expand on.
Yeah, sure. You know, I guess we take the principle, fare is fair. So those who pay need to have confidence that everybody's paying. We're also very excited about the low-income fare program we're just going to introduce here, as mentioned earlier. Part of this is, our most recent survey is about 13% fare evasion on our system. We need to move that down, and we are going to move that down. We need, part of, in my opening comments, I talked about Portland Patrol Incorporated Inc., which is a group that we would look to actually put more fare enforcement folks out there who can enforce the code for us. So we see this definitely needing to move down, and it will move down over time. So you'll see more, I wanna call them officers, but peace officers out there on the system enforcing fares.
So the material that we looked at over the last two or three years showed actually a downward trend towards fare box recovery. And I'm guessing that we may see that trend continue as the incremental tax rises and the state program kicks in, which will fund more of your operational improvements. So is that a fair guess that that will dilute the proportion of fare recovery?
No, that's not how that works. It's a direct metric based on the amount of fares that we collect against what our operating costs or system costs are. So fare recovery and fares, fare recovery and ridership are very, very closely tied. So we've seen a decline in ridership over time, over the last couple of years, not as much as other agencies, but some. We feel like that's had an impact on it. But we are also focusing in on the fare avoidance, folks that just simply don't pay. And so we believe that increasing presence on the system will, and perhaps folks observing others, you know, receiving a citation, would deter them from it, from avoiding fares. And they would start paying more. So that's one objective. But there are other things. The increase in other types of revenue does not affect the fare recovery ratio.
Although it affects the rate of rise of your operating costs. And I also presume that seven years of no fare increase also pushes that curve.
Yes, it does.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
And down the road, we would anticipate there will be marginal fare increases to come over time. But I do agree with Dee's comments that part of this is, was asked earlier, is it's a combination of driving ridership and driving, I'll call, enforcement as well. We're also looking at other revenue, you know, streams as well outside of ridership times the unit cost. You know, we're gonna look at, you know, other revenues we can get from, you know, sort of cap and trade, other types of revenue streams. They don't go against, as Dee indicated, the cost recovery, the operating cost that the users pay. So we're continuing to optimize our revenue streams in the business. But the operating cost piece is, we're confident we need to focus on this and improve it. But we also need to do so with the trust of the system out there. We want, and this is where you get to safety. If people don't feel safe, they're probably not gonna want to come. So if people feel safe, they'll come. Plus, we'll make sure we have fare enforced. But we believe that is an important set of levers that are actually gonna help us manage the cost effectiveness and the efficiency of operating cost recovery.
But we're also working on the operating cost side. We are looking for ways to make our system more efficient. We've reduced the amount of automatic increase annually on our materials and supplies accounts throughout the district. So that brings down the operating costs. And so the fare box recovery metric is improved.
Thank you.
So I think my questions are answered on the fare recovery part. But I'm interested in, on the enforcement side now, and you mentioned in the opening statements about Portland Patrol Incorporated. And I'm wondering what kind of equity considerations have gone into that and just proactively, what you're thinking about as far as, you know, who feels safe where and when riding the system?
Yeah, I think there's, I think for some that, you know, we have transit police out there. We have a bit of a spectrum of types of people who can enforce fares. And part of this is also the confidence, you don't actually have to have somebody who can write the ticket to actually bring confidence to the system that if I saw somebody, we have contractors out there called G4S, for example. They don't necessarily write tickets, but the fact that they're out there actually brings confidence to people that they don't know if they can enforce tickets or not. So we believe that, and I've seen this in other agencies, by having that broader presence out on the system, there's a lot higher propensity that people are, may get their fare checked. This is a proof-of-payment system. So when asked, you need to produce appropriate and valid fare. So by putting more collective individuals on the system, you'll see that increase. Now, for some, we acknowledge they may feel threatened by a police officer or others. We feel, and we're doing some work in this regard with our, we have an advisory committee to the general manager, it's called TAC, the Transit Equity and Advisory Committee. And we've just expanded that group recently. And we're also forming a safety and security committee as well. And we'll be taking and having discussions just like this around how we manage the equity piece of part of overall fare enforcement. A significant underpinning of this is actually going to be our low-income fare program, which we're really excited about. So I think that's gonna go a long way to helping those in need still have access to the system and still have a mechanism to pay for economic and other reasons. So by handling this on several fronts, we actually feel pretty comfortable with these investments. It'll move the surety of our overall system up. I don't know, John, did you want to comment?
No, I just, I think exactly what you said about the safety, security advisory committee, which is gonna be populated with community-based organizations, specifically those that serve low-income or culturally-specific populations. We want their voice to make sure we're doing things the right way in a sensitive manner that sort of makes the system welcoming for everyone.
Thanks.
Safety and security and trust and equity, and these are all topics that we've been talking about quite a bit. One of the safety considerations has to do with positive train control. This is the first year I'd ever heard that term. I guess tragically because there have been problems around the country, not with your system, but with other systems. And I think the public would benefit from an explanation of what positive train control is. So...
Sure. I'll just ask Steve Witter, our executive director of engineering, to help respond to that.
Thank you, Doug. As you noted, positive train control really came about after a tragic freight train and commuter rail accident that happened in Los Angeles back in 2006, 2007 time period. So positive train control, to define it, it is the latest generation of equipment, technology, and procedures that can automatically bring a moving train to a rapid halt. PTC's many features include its ability to stop a train if it exceeds the track speeds, if it passes a red signal, or gets too close to another train. It's really when you have a shared freight and passenger corridor, it's to keep those trains separated. Trimet and the host railroad, Portland and Western Railroad, are on track to fully implement PTC in the west corridor by the federally mandated deadline of December 31, 2018. The next phase that the project is about to enter is called the revenue service demonstration phase. And that's where we really turn it on with the approval of the Federal Railroad Administration. We are on track to submit that final application to them at the end of this month. We've been working with them since last fall on various versions of that and sort of responding to comments as they're received. Excuse me. So we're really about to turn it on. I do want to note that when WES was put into place in its inception, we had a sort of, we had a similar set of protections that we called cab signals. So it was a computerized system that actually monitored train speeds as it went through various parts of the track and then would warn the driver that they were about to stop the train. If the driver did not respond, the train would be stopped. This is really an enhanced version of that and is compatible with the freight railroad as well. The fiscal year 2018 and '29 expenditures will pay for the final testing that comes with the revenue service demonstration project, as well as completing the safety plan documentation, which is key for us to move forward. I will note of the approximately $1.95 million in the budget, $1.5 million of that is actually through a FRA grant that we applied for. So we are seeking, we are receiving some assistance from the federal government and will seek other opportunities as they arise.
So you anticipated my follow-ups, which were about source of funding and so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you.
David, so given the national attention that was brought because of a series of incidents, what is your deadline, what is the federal deadline by which you have to comply and be fully operational?
So the federal deadline is actually, excuse me, by the end of this calendar year. It has moved several times and has moved sort of at the lobbying of the larger freight railroads. Part of the reason, if there's a supply and demand sort of component to PTC and its cost and its schedule, so every small railroad that runs passenger and freight, every large railroad that has passengers on their lines are all trying to do the same work at the same time. So it, but compliance, we will comply. We will, you know, certainly do that with plenty of time before the end of the year.
Thank you.
I might just add, this is a compliment to Steve and our operating team. Trimet's being used as an example in Washington by the FTA have had two requests recently for us to be, to participate as a role model for many other transit agencies who are going through this very complex conversion. And so through the FTA and also APTA, our transit agency, Steve and team and Patrick Price's team have been literally, we send them down to Washington to help others through the implementation and the steps we've taken to actually get this in place. So we're ahead of the curve here where many other transit agencies in the United States are struggling to hit that deadline. So we will be in place ahead of time.
That's great to hear.
So this is small potatoes on the overall size of the Trimet budget. But I guess part of why I was interested in what the deadline was and the timeline is because I saw in the budget, it said the total cost of implementing positive train control is like $4.2 million. And I think that $2.6 million was budgeted in this year and $1.7 million was budgeted in next year, which made it sound to me like we were doing this over a decade or eight years or something. And so where's the rest of that $14.2 million being spent? And if you don't know the answer, obviously, $14.2 million, especially if a lot of it's coming from the federal government, is small. We don't need to spend a lot of time on it.
I'd have to go do some follow-up. We really should complete in this year, so...
Okay. Maybe if somebody could just send an email to Craig explaining that afterwards? Thanks.
Thank you.
The next question is about the southwest corridors. So could you please tell us the status of the corridor plan and what are the critical factors required to continue planning for this expansion?
Great, thank you. The southwest corridor plan includes a new 12-mile max line from downtown Portland to Tigard and eventually on to Bridgeport Village into Wallerton. It also is complemented by a strategy that's in place and managed by Metro, our metropolitan planning organization, to ensure that development that follows along with the expansion of light rail happens in an equitable way and that we're able to address some of the development pressures that come along with increased transit. Metro's currently the project lead for the compliance with National Environmental Protection Act, as well as administers of the FTA grant for equitable development that I just mentioned. Trimet is providing project design and engineering for the light rail component of this larger southwest corridor plan. The light rail project has completed its draft envi, well, I should take a moment. We're in the process of completing our draft environmental impact statement. We recently heard from FTA up in Region 10 that they're gonna take a little bit longer with issuing that document. So I noted that sort of mid-month, we would be seeing that published, maybe closer to the end of the month. So that's a little bit dynamic. But all comments that we've heard from our FTA partners have been positive about the document. They're just a little hesitant, given it's their first environmental impact statement that they're signing with this new administration in Washington DC. So they want to cross all the Ts, dot all the Is. Critical factors required to continue the project are the selection of a locally preferred alternative in June of 2018. Again, that time may vary a little bit. And the locally preferred alternative will ultimately be adopted by Metro Council, the Trimet Board, and other jurisdictional bodies, City of Tigard, City of Portland... Trimet Board, and other jurisdictional bodies, City of Tigard, City of Portland, City of Walinton, et cetera. We will submit an application to enter the project development phase to the Federal Transit Administration in January of 19. That's when the project really starts to move through the federal funding pipeline. You might ask, why are we not in project development right now? Project development is a two-year-long window, and so timing when we start, along with when we want to exit that process, is key. Let me see. And that will happen with publication of the final environmental impact statement in July of 2019. That's followed with a record of decision, which is the federal government's sort of final sign-off on the impacts of the project. A public vote to approve local funding support for the project is scheduled for the general election in November of 2020, and then Trimet would seek to receive its full funding grant agreement at the end of '22. And project is currently planned to go into service in fall of 2027. So if you have any other questions.
That's good, I think that's good, thank you.
Can I follow up?
Sure. Taking off my T S C C hat for just a moment and putting on my public person persona hat.
Okay.
My experience with the interstate corridor, when it went through that process and evolved and became this incredible addition to that community, in my community, but there was also gentrification that followed it. And so I would anticipate that there will be some similar issues with the corridor as it evolves. What is Trimet's role in addressing, you talk about equitable development in your comments, what does Trimet have a role in addressing some of these issues that come with increased access and increased, you know, improvements in the corridor?
Sure. Trimet absolutely plays a role in that. And while our primary mission is to provide high-quality transit service, we also are partners in the development community, and specifically, we target our activities with nonprofits and affordable housing providers. And let me explain how we do that. When we build these projects, oftentimes we impact properties, and sometimes the impacts are small and sometimes they are large. And when they are large, oftentimes we end up sort of acquiring the whole property at that point. We seek to then put that property back out on the market, and that also might be staging sites, it might be part of the alignment. So various reasons would cause us to require acquisition of the property. What we have done in the past and what we will agree to do in a multi-jurisdictional memorandum of understanding is when we dispose of our property, there are two components to the disposal of that property. There's a, the local share of the funding that went to purchase that property, and then the federal share of the funding that went to purchase that property. Our last few projects have been 50-50 split, 50% local, 50% federal. What we've been able to do when we release these properties is get federal concurrence that we can not charge them for the federal share of the property. So therefore, we're able to put the property out to a, again, to these development, community development corporations, other nonprofits, at a reduced price for the property. So we're able to essentially discount it. We do that usually through an R F P process so that we're very targeted about the kind of, the kind of, I'm sorry, it's escaping me, the kind of community development corporations that would participate in that. So we don't discount for, you know, private for-profit developers. So I'm sorry, that was a little bit long-winded.
No, that was terrific, thank you.
Appreciate it. I also have the next question. We were very encouraged to see that you put $1 million into your equity program in the general manager's budget this year. And can you tell us about how that increased appropriation is planned to be spent?
Certainly. The increase to the Department of Diversity and Transit Equity's budget, which is housed in the office of the G M, is meant to support the planned cost of the first year implementation of the new low-income fare program. As you heard, H B 217, with this passage, Trimet now is committed and has the ability to launch a new low-income fare program that will allow adults between the ages of 19 and 64 who make under 200% of the federal poverty level be able to purchase discounted fares at 50% off the single-use or day pass cost and at 72% off the cost of a monthly pass. The budget increase is meant to support the cost of program administration staff, equipment, the hop cards, and contracts with community-based organizations and nonprofits and human service agencies that are going to do the recruitment, the outreach, the registration, and basically the program sign-up in this first year.
Terrific. And one of our commissioners was sick this morning, so we had to take a couple of additional questions, and I get the next one. And it's very long, so I'm just going to read it. Trimet is expanding service with more frequent buses and new bus lines. Could you tell us about some of the completed and planned changes? What data and methods does Trimet use to identify, evaluate, and select new and expanded services, service needs? And how do service improvement objectives sync with diversity and transit equity objectives?
Well, I'm going to take the answer to that, and I'm not going to read it because it's long. And I think you have in your materials the list of projects that we are putting out on the street or completed in this last fiscal year and the plan changes. The board hasn't quite finalized that yet, but we're getting close to that final approval. What I'll just say about the list of improvements is that they fall into a number of different categories. So typically, we make improvements to existing routes where we find overcrowding, there's not enough room on a bus for the passengers, and we pass them up. That's kind of a no-no in the industry. We will add additional buses on that route to accommodate the crush loads during the peak hours typically. So we make those kinds of changes. We add buses to routes to deal with congestion. So if we have a seven-minute distant time between buses, we call that a headway. If we have a seven-minute headway and congestion is creating a slowing of that route to now it's 10 or 12 minutes between buses, we'll add buses to get back to the seven-minute headway. And what we are doing now, which is really exciting, is in addition to that, we're adding weekends and evenings. So you see a couple of the routes are being extended to 24-hour service. So that's really a benefit to those folks who work the swing shift and graveyard and who have very early call times for their morning jobs. So we are looking forward to really having better service for those night owls that work over the course of the evening. And then a couple of new routes. So those are always exciting for us. They tend to be fairly expensive because you're putting all of that service out all at once, so we don't have the opportunity to do those, you know, multiple versions of that a year. Typically, we can add about one new route a year. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of those are focused on north-south service, so not necessarily service that's coming into downtown Portland, but is serving crosstown trips from East Portland to Columbia Corridor or down Clackamas County industrial area or in Washington County, typical north-south trips there as well. Always a little bit different, a little bit more of a challenge in places like Washington County where you don't necessarily have a road network that goes north-south. So trying to find our way through. And the commissioner from O H S U will appreciate that we're also adding quite a bit of new service up to O H S U.
Thank you.
It's one of the biggest trip generators destinations in the region, one of the biggest employers, and many, many, many clients and patients that also visit the school, both up on the hill and down at the waterfront. So we're adding service to that major attractor. And then to the other question about how do we evaluate where to put service, it's a bit of an art and a science. The science part of it is we look at existing performance on our existing routes. We have automatic trip counters, so we know how many people are getting on the bus. We know when we're getting pass-ups because the operators have a mechanism on their dashboard that they notify us when they're having pass-ups. That helps our planning team decide when and where we need to put additional buses. We keep very close tabs on where there's development, both housing and employment development. We know when there are major new employers going into the region, and we look to try to find ways to serve them. We do extensive outreach with the community. We have basically almost a year-long process of having conversations with the community about where they'd like to see service and getting input. We're plusing up that effort this year around the House Bill 2017 process and having very intensive budget workshops with the community, working with a number of nonprofits in the region that work with culturally-specific organizations and communities to get their involvement. So we'll have very good input in this budget round and planning round about where folks would like to see additional service placed. And then we have a minimum service threshold, so we have a certain number of rides per hour that we look to have on a route. And if it below, it runs below that, then we either look to change the route or do more outreach and communication, or ultimately, if the route doesn't perform, we cancel that route or move it somewhere else. And then finally, in Mr. Gardner's shop, we have a federal requirement, which is a Title VI analysis, which requires that we analyze any significant change to the system or equity impacts, to make sure that we're not adversely impacting communities, but also that we're not providing benefits to majority communities that are not shared by minority communities. So every change we make has to pass through that analysis. And then just to further on the question of diversity and how we sync that up with our service planning process, we've done a lot of work over the last couple of years, as has Metro and the City of Portland and others, to identify where low-income and minority communities live and what the destination, trip destinations are that they're most interested in reaching. And so we've taken a lot of that information. We have a very sophisticated G I S mapping program that allows us to do heat maps and other visual representations of where trip origins and destinations are. We work with many of the companies to get diaries and surveys of their employees, you know, where do you live, what are your trip beginning and ends look like? We use all of that information to put into our analysis. And as House Bill 2017 process moves forward, that will be even more intensive because it requires that we identify areas with high concentrations of low-income households and that we focus our attention as we build additional service on those areas. So that will be a very important factor in the future growth of the system over the next five years.
Thank you.
So Trimet had a brief foray into the idea of a bond for affordable housing. In and out pretty fast, moved the project to Metro in a hurry. So my question is, what role are you playing with Metro now in the continuing planning for potential bond measure?
I'll take that one. Trimet is not a formal participant in development of a possible Metro affordable housing bond measure. However, Trimet and Metro work very closely on regional strategies to promote affordable housing, particularly in areas with significant transit services. Metro's transit-oriented development program has completed 41 projects to date, leveraging 15.3 million of T O D project program developments in support of more than 684 million in development activity. In addition, as noted earlier by Bernie, Trimet works with nonprofit, low-income, or steep, affordable housing developers such as Reach Community Development. To leverage the value of excess properties, mostly lots left over from light rail construction, Trimet will, to the extent allowed under federal law, write down the cost of land acquired for light rail construction that is excess to ongoing operational needs. We'll work to partner with local jurisdictions and nonprofits to use these discounted lands to benefit affordable housing developments that is appropriate to station areas. Currently, Trimet is working with Reach and others on a number of projects at 124th and Ash and Northeast Argyle. Combined, these projects are expected to produce between 364 and 373 affordable units. Finally, Trimet, Metro, and the City of Portland are working on strategies to maximize the number of affordable or low-income units that can be leveraged by the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project. Metro received an F D A Corridor-Based Transit-Oriented Development Grant for $895,000. The goal of the grant work is to define a Southwest Corridor Equitable Development Strategy to address current and future residents' needs around housing, employment, and education as the corridor grows, and as the transit investment influences that growth. Trimet and the city and Metro plan to use the work of this program grant to inform strategies for maximizing the number of affordable and low-income units that can be leveraged on the project.
So I think I have the last question. Thank you for all of your expertise walking us through this. This is about electric buses. So you talked about in your opening statements how there are five electric buses, I think, purchased with help of federal funds that are arriving later this year. And we're worried, and we're not worried, we're encouraged, but we're wondering about what the potential conversion to electric or other alternate fuel sources means for Trimet in a larger frame. So we're wondering if these types of buses cost more to purchase or operate, if there are additional funding sources available, and more importantly, maybe how they change, if at all, Trimet's overall operations, and then if there's a partnership in place with P G E or other kind of local electric entities.
I think I'll field that one. So Trimet's very interested in converting from diesel to renewable energy propulsion. We are, we have, over the years, looked at various different options, natural gas and so forth. Right now, the technology that's most, looks the most promising in terms of achieving our goals is battery-electric buses. So it's really a question of when, not if. So we definitely intend to be there and convert our fleet entirely to non-diesel. Right now, the industry is sort of in its early period, and so there's risk involved in how quickly we would convert over to the current technology that's out there. They are, electric buses are significantly more expensive on the capital side right now than a diesel bus. So diesel bus runs you about $500,000. A battery-electric bus could be $700 to $1 million, depending on the configuration. And in addition to that, you have significant charging infrastructure, both at the depot for overnight charging, and then depending on the type of bus that you use, potentially charging at the layover location. So once it's out on the route, some of the buses need a top-off during the day in order to meet the requirements of the distance that they have to travel. And that end-of-route charging infrastructure is quite expensive. It's not just that you hook it up to, you know, a plug somewhere, you actually have to have transmission lines and all of the other infrastructure to support that. So they're more expensive on the initial capital investment. The hope is that they are, they present a net savings over time because the kind of propulsion system of electric motors and batteries require, hopefully over time, require less maintenance than a diesel engine, which of course is trying to bang itself to pieces every minute of every day. But there are also other issues, you know, the motor and the battery are part of the issue, there's also the bus. And, you know, we don't have a lot of history with some of the manufacturers that are in the industry in making buses. Some of the manufacturers, like Gillig and New Flyer, have a long, long history, but others like Proterra and B Y D that are offering this product, they haven't had a bus that's been out on the road for 15 years, and we don't know how they'll perform. been out on the road for 15 years, and we don't know how they'll perform. And the long-range trajectory of cost savings also depends on sort of the price of the bus coming down as technology improves, the length of time that the bus can be out without a charge improving, carbon credits being a fairly healthy offset of the initial capital cost. So there are a lot of variables which we are studying, and we will have a report that we'll deliver to the board this summer with a recommendation about how, when we want to jump into this field and how quickly we want to immerse ourselves in it.
Great. I think it's fair to say we'll be looking forward to kind of learning about that next year, as we did our internal conversations about this, thinking, you know, not only does it change, of course, all of the aspects that you've identified, but also, you know, the labor force that's needed to maintain and operate, how long the lines can be, what the routes can be with the difference in weight for the buses. So we'll be really interested to hear more about that once you've had a chance to dig in. And then, of course, as you talked, General Manager Kelsey, about growing the fleet from 600-some-odd buses to 900-some-odd, we'll be very interested in knowing, you know, what the target and percentage is that we'll be trying to convert to alternate fuel.
And that's all part of our analysis and thinking. We would, we have mapped our system to identify those routes that are most amenable to the current electric bus technology, so essentially shorter routes that have fewer hills, and also where we can fit charging technology into our current bus facilities. So Center Street, as Doug mentioned, Center Street is at complete, it's above capacity right now, so there's really not room to put in charging infrastructure. Charging infrastructure takes up about 12% of the space that you have. So because every other row, you have to run a little median that has the charging infrastructure and room to plug it into the buses, things like that have to be considered in terms of where we would deploy the buses. That's why the initial five are out in Washington County, because that garage has a little bit of extra space, and the charging infrastructure doesn't push us over a sort of a cliff in terms of available room. And you asked also about additional funding sources. There are some, they're very limited. There's a federal no-low grant program that we use to fund the initial five buses, and we're looking at applying for that. There was just a notice of funds available that came out this week on that program, so we're looking at whether we have a niche where we could submit for that federal grant again. But by and large, the funding have to come from TRIMET's resources, and House Bill 2017 encourages us to look at using some of that resource for electric bus. And then finally, the question about PGE. PGE has been a terrific partner on this, and I don't say that just because we're in their building. The utility has been very interested in electric vehicles in general, both passenger vehicles and buses. We initially submitted an application to the federal government for four buses plus charging infrastructure. We were able to work with PGE to get the utility commission to agree that PGE could own and maintain the charging infrastructure, and that freed up enough resources for us to buy a fifth bus. And it, we hope, establishes a precedent that we can look to moving forward, where the charging infrastructure goes from, you know, in this case, $500 or some thousand to many millions of dollars. When we fully build out the system, our hope would be that we would be able to work with utilities to have a similar cost-sharing arrangement, where they pay for the initial capital infrastructure to do the charging. That frees us up our resources to buy more vehicles.
Thank you. I'll retract.
Okay. Thank you all for your contributions to this discussion. It was very thoughtful. We have one public sign-up today for a question, Mr. Ron Swobin?
Sworin.
Sworin, okay. Could you please come up? Use the microphone, please.
When you're talking about electric buses, have you heard of TM4 Corporation?
I have not.
It's a subsidiary of Hydro Quebec, and they were manufacturing electrical turbines. So, and then they went into electric motor manufacturer. They retrofit buses and trucks, they have an agreement, I think they may have an agreement with BYD to provide the electric motors. And now they're also partnering with Cummins and a company called Live Axle. So this is really a big concern. And they redesigned their electric motor for 30% more torque with a, they call it outward rotor topology. And I believe they're very cost-effective, and basically, they can retrofit buses. I read about a transit agency in Washington, Kitsepp Transit, that retrofitted older buses with diesels, and for $89,000, they were able to get vehicles that worked like new. So maybe this TM4 would be something to look into. I mean, it's definitely a coming technology, and they seem to be pretty expert in it, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have a look at that, for sure.
With no other comments, I will now close the hearing and open up a meeting of the TSCC. With that, is any comment from the commission on the budget?
Good.
Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to Craig.
Thank you.
Okay. Margot, can you?
We found that TRIMET, as usual, followed all the processes and constructed their budget according to state law. We have no objections to propose to you. We do have one recommendation, and that recommendation has to do with the conduct of the Budget Committee meeting. When large districts have boards that serve as the Budget Committee, that process sometimes gets minimized because it's not a traditional citizen budget committee, it's a board budget committee. So we're recommending that TRIMET emphasize that Budget Committee meeting more in the process, and in fact, actually separate it from the board meeting and call a separate Budget Committee meeting at the same time. It just gives more gravitas to the Budget Committee process. We've talked with staff, they understand our concern, so we're recommending that they emphasize that next year. The other thing, we're really interested in financial discipline. It's something that often gets lost in the public sphere and private sphere. TRIMET's set out a few years ago to pay down its unfunded actuarial liability. That took, that takes financial discipline, and TRIMET is on track and doing it. And I think it's worth a way to go, to stay on that track and exhibit financial discipline. Those are my comments.
Thank you. It's certainly rare, and we review budgets for all of the regional governments, basically 42 of them, and it is rare to take the steps that y'all have taken to get ahead of your unfunded liability. So excellent job on that.
Any other comments or questions? With that, may I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by the staff?
I will move that.
Second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any further discussion? With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No? Okay, great. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Yeah. So it's 9:19, we're scheduled to start the public forum at 9:30. Is that enough time for us to get set up for that, do you think? How about, let's start about 9:35 then or something? Okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.